Go ahead and call the October meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission to Order. We'll let the record show that all commissioners are present. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not up for public hearing on this agenda, please come up and do so at this time and sign in. You'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Okay, moving along. Item four, acceptance of the minutes of the September 13th, 2006 meeting. I see we have some revised minutes. Make a motion to approve their revised minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Julio Dumas, to approve the revised minutes. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item five, acceptance of the simple division of property approved by the Planning Commission Chairman from September 1st, 2006 to September 31st, 2006.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'd like to discuss the...
Okay.
We don't see this information. I don't feel comfortable approving something. I don't know if it's correct or not.
Microphone, Sherry.
Sorry. Did you hear me?
Would you go ahead and repeat?
My question is, we don't see this information. We get a report with our packet, and we don't know if it's correct or not. I know that's the way it's always been done, but I question, how do I know it's accurate? How do I put my name saying it's accurate and correct?
I guess that's something that we could refer to legal counsel and our parish planner to. Because my understanding is, part of that has worked into the ordinance, is part of it is also, the commission empowered the chairman to do that.
Part of the ordinance. The ordinance empowered.
Well...
That's the ordinance authorizes you to do it, not the commission. So you're authorized by the council.
That's why I said, I knew part of it was in the ordinance, but I also knew, because there were some conversations, I remember some earlier conversations about three or four years ago where we discussed that. I think, Charles, you and I discussed that and...
The only thing they're really doing is just ratifying it. You could assure them that it is correct, or you certainly are more than welcome to come look at any of the plats at the office. I mean, I don't know what else we could offer.
I don't either. I'm just kind of questioning procedure.
Well, that's an interesting question. The ordinance authorizes the chairman to sign these simple subdivisions. Does the ordinance require them to come before the planning commission?
No. He authorized him to sign it and it be ratified.
To ratify.
So we just simply ratified them.
Right.
So at this point, they've already been approved?
Yes.
Yeah, these, what you're looking at is all the plats that I signed for the month. Now, that could be subdivisions that we approved, that got a final approval, simple divisions of property without a variance, that they don't have to come before the commission, they meet all the requirements, the family partitions that we approved, the simple divisions, the stuff that the commission has approved, and then, I said, the simple divisions of property that don't need to come before the commission. So that's...
Claire, these are simple divisions that meet the criteria, there's no variance requested, they front on a public road, there's really nothing to go out and discuss on any of these matters, as long as they meet the parish criteria for fronting on a public road and so forth, that's the way it's been done since I've been on. And you bring up a good point, Sherry. How do you know, why do you put the commission's approval on it when the commission doesn't deal with it? I don't know how to answer that, but that's a good valid point.
Mike, you just mentioned a whole lot of other things. These are just simple subdivisions that you're authorized to sign, not stuff that we've already seen and approved.
No, this is already, this is stuff that the commission has in some, when we approve, we grant a final approval, yes, that, look, if you look on there, the very first thing. The chairman still has to sign the plats, no matter what.
Yeah, but if it comes, and I guess this is a question more legal, if it comes before the planning commission, and the planning commission holds a hearing, we review it and we approve it by motion. Do we still have to ratify his signature at a later date?
No. You're authorizing him to do it, because you can put it on here, it's always been put on there, he's already authorized to do that.
This report, with my understanding, this was only supposed to be simple divisions of property, and that's not the case? Charles?
It's really everything. Everything that's been signed.
Well, the things that have been signed, I don't see a reason for that to be on this report. I mean, we've already, the commission's acted on that, and the chairman's just signed it. It's the simple divisions of property without a variance.
We could leave those off if you so desire.
I think that would clarify some things, because the title of this report does say "simple division of property report."
We could leave them all.
We have a motion. We had a motion before.
Yeah, there's...
Motion in second.
Motion in second. Okay, I have, okay, I have a motion by Paige Becknell, and a second by Mike Bardwell to approve. Any further discussion, or is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Don't you think next month we ought to just limit it to simple subdivisions to make it more straightforward? It's not as confusing.
Well, let's go ahead, we'll discuss that, we'll bring that item up under new business. Discuss it then. Item six, public hearings for the granting of approval to the following family partition, 6A Albert Henderson Darville Estate, lots 3-B1 through 3-B4.
Clint Quinton Mall, representing WJ Quinton Mall Surveyors, asking for planning commission approval on the Albert Henderson Darville Estate family partition. There were no comments from the planning department, nor were there any comments from the consulting agency.
Comments or questions from commissioners at this time? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and speak, come up and sign in with the secretary, and you'll have your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I'll move for approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas, seconded by Sherry Slime, and is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 6B, Carol Wolfe property, tract D-1-A-1 and D-1-A-2.
James Fabu Earls and Associates representing Ms. Carol Wolfe in the following family partition. All comments were addressed, and they were made on the following plat, asking the planning commission for approval.
Any comments or questions from commissioners at this time? We'll go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up and sign in with the secretary, and we'll get you three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have just one, just on the 40-foot all-purpose servitude. Is that including, or am I just not seeing it, the utility servitude?
Yes, sir.
So that includes it?
Included, all-purpose.
Is it not a better situation to put the utility servitude?
Look at your dedication note. It shows that it's included. It could have been separated.
What would be the reasoning for including it on some plats and not including it on others?
Decline in the front, the James Chastain, I mean, they only have 90-foot frontage as it is, and they have an existing mobile home on that lot, so if we'd actually add a 12-foot, we'd kind of be pushing the limits of what they could build on that property.
Okay, so why don't you go, why don't you come access it from tract D1-A1? We leave Mr. Chastain out of it.
Go around.
Yeah, go on the east side of the existing house.
The utilities actually already ran back there down this, down that property line. Actually, it's on the line itself, the property line is powerful, is going straight down that line anyway, so by running it around is...
Well, but if you've got the, if you've got the power lines going down the middle of that 40-foot servitude, where are you going to do it?
It's not going down, it's going right down the property line. It's actually feeding both sides of the property.
All right, so leave the utilities...
The Ralph Leek and the Wolfe's property.
Okay, so you leave the utilitiesman on that side, but instead of taking up 40 feet of the 96-foot frontage, put the Ingress and Egress servitude on the other side, so that you free up the Chastain parcel.
I didn't quite understand what you were saying. Put it where?
Excuse me. Take this access and put it on this side of the parcel.
It's already existing on this left side. It was an existing 20-foot on that left side, and we increased it from 20 to 40. When this lot was created, they accessed a 20-foot, a 20-foot servitude passage on that side of the lot already, to give her access to the back of her property, when she's subdivided the property. So we just added another 20 feet to that, instead of having a 40-foot on one side and a 20-foot on the other.
Well, Steve, is the pipeline surveyed, or is it just visually located? I mean, how do you...
It's surveyed. We shot the markers out there. It's 50 foot from each marker, each way, total of 100 foot right-of-way.
Just to term apparent, throws me off.
Well, you can't determine exactly how far the right-of-way, I mean, you don't know if they put the pipe right in the middle of the servitude.
You factored on here that this property is zone medium intensity residential? This is on the north side of Church Point Road?
Yes, sir, it is.
It's not zone medium intensity residential, it's zone rural.
Rural. That can be changed.
Just for my clarification, you're, the 40-foot all-purpose servitude, is that the private servitude of passage that you were referring to earlier?
No, inside of that 40-foot was an existing 20-foot, but since they require in us, since we're dividing the back piece, they're requiring to make it 40, so we increased the existing 20-foot to 40-foot.
And you're calling it an all-purpose servitude?
Yeah. There was never granted a utility servitude on side of it. It was just 20-foot servitude.
That's the reason why it wasn't, or utility servitude was not dedicated on this plat?
Was because it was existing? I can show you the reference plat if you'd like to see it, where the 20-foot was granted. It was granted in 2001.
But that's a private instrument between two parties, correct?
Correct. With the chastains in the front, and they're agreeing to increase it from 20 to 40-foot.
What was it, what was it at that point? Was it an all-purpose servitude at that point?
In 2000, before this, before it was subdivided into the front, the front two lots, there was no servitude, and when they divided up into the front lot, they added a 20-foot servitude passage down that property line, so she could have access to the back piece of her property, instead of going through her backyard to go around. And they're agreeing to increase it from 20 to 40.
Because of the ordinance?
Yeah. If you'd like to see, it was granted in 2001.
I didn't think the ordinance stipulated or allowed for an all-purpose servitude. I thought the servitude was a servitude of passage, and that was it.
It's been done before. We've done it on quite a few plats before, 40-foot also purpose servitude of passage. It is allowable.
Well, that's a good question. I'd like to hear what staff has to say about it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
The 40-foot all-purpose servitude, that's inclusive of both servitude of passage and utilities, is that consistent with the ordinance? The ordinance allows for that?
The ordinance really doesn't mention an all-purpose servitude. We had a legal opinion, maybe six, seven years ago, that allowed it.
For that to be combined into one?
Yes. So you're saying it was challenged, and an opinion was drafted on it?
No, it was just, there was an instance where the width wasn't there to provide both the separate servitudes, and the attorney, the parish attorney at the time, came up with the idea of an all-purpose servitude, and just wanted to make sure that the dedication note covered both utilities and access.
We want the public hearing yet?
Yeah.
She's actually also making her son, when she's transferring the property to him, making sure that the property will never be subdivided, it'll stay as one tract, five and a half acres.
You know, let me share this with you. These are my issues with it. Tract D1B, the Jacob Chastain parcel, by us doing this, what we're going to do is, we're going to create a, we're going to put the board of adjustment in a difficult position, because if you ever want to do anything there, it's going to require a visit to the board of adjustment. In my opinion, that's a self-induced problem. As far as the availability of width, you've got ample width to generate, you know, a servitude of passage on the east side of the parcel. You don't necessarily have to expand that, that existing 20-foot privately dedicated easement, that can be privately rescinded at any time. As far as the utility easement, you know, if the utility companies went back there without a utility servitude, that's their business. I think we need to require you to put 12-foot utility easement to, you know, in its place, but the way you've got it laid out, you know, personally to me, just doesn't make any sense.
But it does meet the requirements for a family partition?
Well, I guess that's subject to interpretation, and several years ago, they interpreted that where the width wasn't available, you could combine them, and here, the width is clearly available.
Well, if we run the utilities, I mean, there's no use making a 40-foot on one side and still having a 20-foot on the other. I mean, if we run the 12-foot utility servitude down and around the property, would that make it better in your eyes, in your opinion?
Well, all I'm saying is, is that you can, the 12-foot utility easement that's there along the property line, is there already, it's physically there. I'm not worried about that one, I'm worried about the access, the servitude of passage. It's the access where that I'm worried about, and I'm worried about what it does to tract D1B. It renders it practically an unbuildable lot. You can't build anything on that lot that would meet code. It's going to take a visit to the board of adjustment, and it's a self-induced problem.
But they're agreeing to it? They putting the mobile home there?
It doesn't matter whether they agree to it or not.
Well, it's their property.
Well, maybe, are they here tonight?
No, they're not, but they have agreed to it, and they're going to be signing the plat also. So if they don't sign the plat, it's not going to get done. They're agreeing to it, they have the full approval.
Do we have that in writing? Do we have it in writing, where they agreed to it?
Not right offhand, I mean, I didn't, don't have that, but I mean, they, according to the plat, they have to sign it, so if they don't sign this thing, it's not going to go through.
I think Julio's wondering if they understand what they're signing, what the commission...
We showed them the map, they showed them everything, they agreed to everything.
Showing them the map is a simple function. Comprehending the complexity of the code and the implications of what they're doing is a far more difficult, far more complex matter. And our job here is not just, you know, to respond to the drawing, our job is to look at it comprehensively. You ready for motion?
Yes. You ready to offer one?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to give you an option. I mean, you can either request a postponement, which I'll support, or I'm going to move for denial, but I'll move for denial on the basis that...
Even though it meets all the requirements.
This is going to render tract D1B as nonbuildable.
I have a motion to deny by Julio Dumas.
I second.
Seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion?
Chair, I ask you to hold on the vote for a second.
Actually, I mean, the motion has...
Well, I was in the middle of saying, like, when you...
I had a motion and a second, at that, I mean, at the same time, you know, at a certain point, too, the commission's ready to go ahead, and you want to keep arguing the point.
I just wanted to give him the option to either postpone it, or I'll make a motion, and if he's willing to postpone it, I'll withdraw my motion, to give him a chance to correct the plat. Is that what you want to do?
Yes, sir.
I'll move for a postponement for 30 days, as a replacement motion, then, can I do that?
Well, you took it, it went a little bit further, because I had a motion and a second. Alan, you want to rescind your second?
Yes.
You want to rescind your original motion?
Yes.
Now you want to make a motion to...
Postpone for 30 days.
Defer till November meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, motion deferred by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6C, Connie Ruyer property, lot B-1-A-1 and B-1-A-2.
Representing Ms. Connie Ruyer in the following family partition, all comments were addressed, asking the planning commission for approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners at this time? We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up and sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Steve Barrow to approve, and a second by Julio Dumas. Is there any objections or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6D, Robert LeBlanc property, lots BB-2-A and BB-2-B. Is there anyone here to represent the Robert LeBlanc property?
I want that we postpone it for 30 days, notify them that if they're not here next month, that it'll be automatically denied.
What about paying the fees?
Paying the fees.
I'll second that. I have a motion by Julio Dumas to defer till next month and repay the fees, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7, public hearing for granting final approval to the following subdivision, 7A Pelican Point Golf Community, 12th filing, part three. Mr. Gotro.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Brandon Gotro, representing Pelican Point Properties, I'm here to ask the commission for final plat approval of Pelican Point Golf Community, 12th filing, part three. I think all the comments have been addressed. We are posting a performance bond for the completion of this development, so we are asking for your approval.
Comments, questions from commissioners?
What stage of the project do you consider this to be in?
The sewer services and trunk line have been installed. The drainage for this particular filing is approximately 60% complete. It's a very small filing, 13 lots, they'll probably be finished with the drainage middle of next week. So if you're looking at it from that standpoint, it's just a road, curbing road and final grading.
So you figure you're 30 days away from finishing?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Your problem with waiting and getting it approved when you're closer to being finished?
Well, the only problem with that, and this has been our strategy for quite some time, is that waiting and going through the process and going through a normal inspection process probably adds another month to the process of actually getting a plat recorded. It's our intention to post a performance bond, to get the plat recorded, to close on some lots that people have been waiting to purchase for quite some time, and this is our practice for the past two years.
Does it take 30, it's taking up to 30 days to get the final inspections once you call it in?
It has been, not necessarily the inspection, but punch list items, things like that. It has been taking that amount of time, and that's why we just go ahead and post performance bonds for our developments, to kind of gain two months.
Have all the declarations, accounments, and restrictions for these lots been...
They have not been recorded, they have been drafted, and I'll be more than happy to record and issue some copies upon signing of the plat and the issuance of the performance bond.
Last month, we had some questions about the sewage system.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get the, was it approval from DHH you were waiting on?
Yes, ma'am. Well, to say that we've gotten approval, I don't think we're at that point yet. I think our engineers have addressed all DHH's comments, as well as Mr. Tom Perchwe with wastewater treatment. I think it's in DHH's hands right now. I don't think we have any issues, I think it's more of a house cleaning type issue with DHH, going back several years. I personally don't think we have a problem. We just expanded the treatment facility to accommodate 800, 900 lots in Pelican Point, and I don't think we're nowhere near that point right now. It will require another expansion. point yet. I think our engineers have addressed all DHH's comments, as well as Mr. Tom Perchwe with wastewater treatment. I think it's in DHH's hands right now. I don't think we have any issues. I think it's more of a house cleaning type issue with DHH, going back several years. I personally don't think we have a problem. We just expanded the treatment facility to accommodate 800, 900 lots in Pelican Point, and I don't think we're nowhere near that point right now. It will require another expansion, probably within the next year, to accommodate the rest of the filings in Pelican Point. But right now, we're fine. I don't know if that answers your question satisfactorily or not.
No, I kind of expected after, last month, I understood y'all were waiting on something, and I thought it was kind of imminent, like it would be coming any day now. So I'm surprised a month later that you don't have it yet.
And I'm not sure, I can't really elaborate on exactly what it is that DHH is requiring us to do. Maybe Michael will have some more information on that, I'm not quite sure. But as far as I know, all the issues with DHH have been addressed. We don't, in my mind, we don't have any issues. I think it was just a house cleaning measure by DHH to make sure they had past plats and past as-built drawings for sewer services over the course of this development, which at one point in time, were not required, so we're having to go back and draw up as-built drawings on the sewer services. I think that's primarily what they were looking for, to complete some files, some old files, that have just never been requested or completed.
Okay, and you were referring to our Michael Sonjesus or something?
Yeah, I didn't mean to put him on the spot. I didn't know if any other development was having this type of issue.
Your issues with the Board of Health are between you and the Board of Health. We...
Sure, I understand.
We checked the gravity system only?
Correct, I understand.
Well, and what this said that we were given last month, this says that you have the capacity to handle 625 residential lots, and currently, there's 786, and now you're going to add more.
The, that conceptual map did not show the addition to the treatment facility that we have in place that DHH is approving, or in the process of approving with the addition of all this other housekeeping measures that they're doing. It was just finalized probably about two months ago. So there is an expansion to the treatment facility that's not taken into consideration on that concept map that you had, only because it wasn't approved at that time.
See, that's, therein lies the problem. It's the math of the units. You know, whatever it is that DHH says that you have approval today, is what matters. I mean, just because it's pending approval, whether it's, we don't know what it is, but until you have that approval, those additional units shouldn't be there, so I guess the question is, how many units do you have approval for?
Correct, and I don't know if I can answer that question right now. Whatever our treatment facility right now, as it stands, I want to say it's 800, 800 lots. But again, I really am not sure. That would probably be a DHH question, or a question for the wastewater treatment people.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Are these lots going to be incorporated into an existing homeowner association, or are they going to be a separate?
Existing, existing association. And let me make a comment on the treatment facility. I think if we go back, matter of fact, to probably the first two filings of Royal Lakes, which you're looking at the third, at the request of the commission, we did bond out that treatment facility, the expansion of that treatment facility. So I'm 99% sure there's still an active bond on that expansion. So it's, the improvements are bonded out, if that's an issue.
Charles, I have a question. What is the prescribed period of public domain for plats?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
Well, we have a letter here from the homeowners' association, and they're asking that, they're asking us to deny it, because the filings were not submitted and complete in public domain for the prescribed period. What does that mean?
I'm really not sure, maybe illegal with them.
I have no clue what they mean. Plus, this was done, this was, Pelican Point was approved prior to our zoning laws, approval of the development code, so I don't know what it means.
Well, one of the things that they do say in the letter is that, you know, this plat references a set of declarations and restrictive covenants is recorded, and they're not recorded, so...
We're not concerned about restrictive covenants, that's not our issue. That's a private matter, and that's what, I mean, to send a letter in without having an attorney contact me, I can't give you a comment on that. I've had no attorney tell me, hey, there's a problem here, these, and I have a problem with that, when they send a letter to y'all saying, we object because it's not doing this, and then I don't, and they haven't had anybody contact me.
Put this on date on it.
It's your, this is, there is an alternate procedure in the code for getting a final approval, and that's what he's using here. It's under 2402, so I mean, this is not something that is not allowed to do.
And this is something that we've done before, I think, in the case of the homeowners' association, is probably misinformation, just not understanding exactly what we're presenting here tonight, as opposed to what we went through last month.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Go ahead, nope.
Okay.
I was going to go ahead and open up the public hearing.
I can wait.
Go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up and sign in with the secretary, and he'll get you three minutes to speak.
Bill Dawson?
Maybe I can clarify some of this. The letter that you have is just a copy of what we're going to talk about tonight. Okay, so this wasn't something that was mailed out ahead of time, something that we gave you a copy of what we would comment on tonight. I'm Bill Dawson, representing the Pelican Point Homeowners' Association Board of Directors. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this agenda item. A copy of these comments are available for your reference. The Pelican Point Homeowners' Association respectfully requests that the Planning and Zoning Commission deny tonight two agenda items presented by Pelican Point Development. The reasons for this request are included herein. The Pelican Point Homeowners' Association received notice via the newspaper that Pelican Point Development had two agenda items for the meeting tonight. These are the final plats for the 12th filing, Part III, and the 13th filing, Parts I and II. We obtained copies of these plats from the Department of Public Works zoning commission. Our board directors reviewed the drawings and generally agree that we do not object to the concept presented by these drawings. However, we feel the submittal was not complete. There's a note on the drawing that refers to the restrictions of these filings. The note says, "All lots are subject to the declaration of restrictive covenants recorded as an adjunct heretofore." These restrictions were not included with the drawings, and as far as we could discern, were not available for public review and comment. The restrictions of our subdivision are critical to not only the new residents in these filings, but also to the existing 600 residents. These restrictions protect our property values and provide for the development of, the continuity of our development. As we understand this process, if the zoning commission approves these plats, then the restrictions will also be approved and filed with the clerk of court as final documents. In this process, we are denied the opportunity to review and comment on the entire submittal. Because we have not had an opportunity to properly review and comment, we ask that the planning commission deny these filings until the submittals are complete and in the public domain for the prescribed period. Now, I'll say that I added this prescribed period, I was under an assumption that there was such a thing, as usually is the case with things that are presented for public domain. Thank you.
Mr. Dawson, for you, has the homeowners' association had any kind, gotten any information at all about these two filings from the developer, any representative of the developer?
As I stated, we found out about this via the public notice in the newspaper.
Okay, so there has been no communications between the developer and the homeowners' association at all?
We did meet with the developer, a representative of the developer, last night. However, it was on another subject, and we did tell him that we were going to attend the meeting tonight and present this.
All right, thank you, sir. No one else?
Kind of referencing what Mr. Dawson said there, I don't think at any point in time, the association made any efforts to contact either me or my replacement with Pelican Point Properties to inquire about restrictions or anything else. This is normal process for us. Restrictions, I don't think, are governed by this board. They are something that we do privately, that we control. Never, I think, in the history of Pelican Point as association, had the legal right to get involved in restrictions on property that we own. I'm not saying that I won't be willing to share that information with them. Maybe it was in bad taste that we haven't done this in the past with presenting the restrictions to the association. I don't have any problems with doing that whatsoever. But I think here tonight, the approval of the plat is straightforward. I think the signing of the plat, if the commission would like to add a contingency upon us bringing the restrictions, having them recorded before signing the plat, I think that's probably all we can do. As far as giving them the legal right to say yea or nay on the restrictions, I don't think they have that. And I don't think you guys have the ability, and I don't want to speak from a legal side, but I don't think the board has the ability to disapprove a plat based off of restrictions. And maybe I'm wrong, I really don't know.
Well, I don't get the feeling that the homeowners' association is trying to give you the go-ahead with your filings. I think they're just wanting to be informed about what's going on, and I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
No, I'm...
And after last month, I thought that a lesson would have been learned. Apparently it hasn't. So, you know, when the residents do hand out information like this, I kind of have to question, well, how are you handling your business? Because apparently, you're not handling it very well, if you're going to get complaints from the people that have already purchased your properties, and they're bringing them here to this meeting.
I understand that, Mike, and you're absolutely right. In the past, we have attended homeowners' association meetings and updated them as far as what was going on in the development. We never had an issue with a final plat, we never had an issue with a preliminary plat. I think I can say that with a clear conscience, as far as people not coming up here and opposing anything that we've ever done. So to say that our relationship has never been there, that's not the case. I think upon my departure, things have kind of changed a little bit. And I think the residents have a bad taste in their mouth as far as the process that everything went through last month. So, yeah, I don't blame them whatsoever for questioning what we have. I think that things can change, as far as communication. I think they are, we're open to having meetings. Matter of fact, as Mr. Dawson said, they had a meeting last night to discuss transfer of common area property. I think they could have brought this up at that point in time and questioned it, and I wouldn't have any issues giving them sets of restrictions that we're going to be recording. That's not the case at all, and I don't have any problems in doing that. But to say our relationship is what it used to be, I don't think that's the case right now. I think that we need to make some efforts to improve that, but in a subdivision this size, I think everybody will agree that you're always going to have people that are misinformed, no matter what efforts we make, and that are always going to question everything that a developer does. It's human nature. So to, you know, to say that this is the norm, I don't think that's the case.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I just have one question. You mentioned that the reason why you were here tonight, even though some things aren't done yet on your property, is that you had some clients that have already committed?
Yes, ma'am.
Have those lots been sold?
No, no, they cannot be sold until the final plat is...
I just wanted to make sure. I wanted to hear that from you.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely correct. No, we have commitments on all this property, and that has been the case for the past three years. We just can't develop the property fast enough to meet the demand. So the process that we go through is bonding final plats to achieve a two-month leeway to close on some property, to give some people some time to make some choices and do the things they need to do. That's just the normal process that we go through.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to move for approval, because the plat complies with the ordinance and what have you, but I'm going to strongly encourage you to work with the homeowners' association on your decks, and I'm going to condition the chairman's signature, okay? If the plat references the declarations being signed, counsel, I can condition it to actually be, I mean, they have to be recorded before you can sign the plat, doesn't he?
You can condition it on that, if that's what the plat says, but you can't say, have any say on what's in those restrictions.
No. You know, so I'm going to condition it that the documents be recorded, made available to the public, prior to signature by the chairman. Other than that, I'd just comment that I would encourage you to be cognizant of the fact that you're burdening other people with it.
Sure.
I still had some discussion. Did we close public hearing?
The public hearing was closed. Julio's made a motion, but there hasn't been a second, so...
Okay, can we still discuss?
I had a comment, and I didn't get a chance to come up. He sat down, and you never said anything after that.
Uh, did you come and sign up with the secretary?
As soon as he sat down, you didn't give him the opportunity.
Uh, sir, I...
Roll the tape back.
He sat down, he stood up. You didn't do anything after that.
I asked the secretary if anyone else had came and signed up.
You did, no, I'm sorry. I didn't bring it back. Run the tape back if you want to.
You did. I, I did ask the secretary if anyone else had signed up, and she told me no, so the public hearing was closed. Now, at the same time, you two gentlemen should have said something at that point.
I do not, I do not.
I, I gave everybody the opportunity to speak.
I would like to have a topic today.
That's, the request for that is easily made. Sherry, you had some discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to ask, this discussion among us, thank you, bonding, and I'm kind of curious why I always hear this from Pelican Point. And Mike, I know you're very knowledgeable about that, and I wondered if you had any input on that.
The only question I was going to have was, what is the percentage of the bond in terms of total maintenance cost, and are we sure in the parish that we're meeting the objective of the bonding?
It's a performance bond, and it's 125% for performance bonds. And that's, I think the bond's determined by Michael.
Based on, based on which figure?
It's based on Michael. He reviews it and makes the determination.
It's based either on the total cost of the project, or if they request it, you know, during the course of construction, we make an estimate of the uncompleted work. And I'm not particular, Sean's not here, I'm not particularly sure exactly what the amount, Charles may know, but generally, they bond 100% of the cost in the past, or 125%.
It's 125%, because it's 20402, Procedure B, Part B, it says 125% in the ordinance.
And when, when I first got on the commission, and it was my understanding, when we see a plat for final approval, there should be roads already in. And I did go look in the code, and I could not find anything in the code that specifically said the roads were supposed to be in, but that was my understanding.
It's not required, there's an alternate procedure, and it's Procedure B. You submit construction plans, you get them approved, then you can post that performance bond. That's what, if you, the subdivision regulations specifically lay out what that Procedure B is. They have two procedures, and that's one of them. That's an allowed procedure under the subdivision regulations. That's the one that I'm reading to you. It's 20402, it's called Procedure B.
I think just so the rest of the commission understands, the final plat still cannot be signed on this until those, all the issues have been addressed, all the punch list items have been done.
Not sure that's correct, if it's been bonded.
Right, if it's bonded, it's bonded. That's what the bond is for. That's why it's 125% instead of 100%.
The bond, the bond, as I understand it, allows for the plat to be filed with no construction started.
Right.
That's the way your ordinance is set up.
That's what the ordinance says. I'm looking right at the ordinance.
What can't happen is you can't transfer title to the property unless the plat's signed and recorded.
Upon completion of those improvements, then you can't, you can't be, that's when they have to post... they have to post a maintenance bond at that point in time. It's another, has to be inspected and approved in a maintenance bond.
So let me make sure I understand this. At that point in time, the performance bond is transferred into a maintenance bond, or for lack of a better word?
It's a separate bond, right?
Right, separate bond. The performance bond ends, maintenance bond begins.
That's correct. There is no connection between the progress of construction and filing the final plat. If it's bonded, there's a timeframe on the bond, typically 12 months, but...
And if it's not done, the bond gets called by me to complete those improvements, which means I sue, I sue the bonding company.
Any further discussion? Yeah, I have a motion on the floor to approve.
I'd like to make a second to that motion.
I have a second. Motion to approve by Julio Dumas was second by Scott, by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7B, Pelican Point Golf Community, 13th filing, parts one and two.
Again, Brandon Goto representing Pelican Point Properties, very similar situation. We're asking for final plat approval of Pelican Point, 13th filing, parts one and two, which are conceptually called the Oaks and the Grove. All comments have been addressed. We're issuing a performance bond for this development. We're asking for your approval.
Comments or questions from Commissioners? No comments or questions, and we'll go ahead and open up the floor for the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up and sign in with the parish secretary. You signed up for this item also, sir?
Phil Dawson.
I have the same, I have the same comments on this item as I did the one before, but I would also like to clarify a couple of things. One, we did bring this up in our meeting last night, and we did tell Pelican Point Development that we wanted a copy of these restrictions, and that was our, that was our objection. Second, and, you know, I kind of, I'm not sure if this is the legal objection of this, but, you know, if we had, we have a drawing that states that a part of that package is attached to it, which is those restrictions. And they weren't attached to it. And so I feel like that the submittal was incomplete. And if we have something here that we're commenting on as a public hearing, the package should be complete. Now, whether the restrictions are something that's under your purview or not is a different question. But the fact that we would have them available for comment before they're approved and filed with the Clerk of Court is important to us. And it's a different subject, and I think, you know, maybe you got confused about that. I'm not saying that you had the right to change them or to comment on them. However, I felt like they should have been in the public domain because they were an attachment to this plat. And the same comments as my letter for the previous one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I want to make it clear that we're not here to make an argument with the Commission, but it is the burden of the Pelican Point Homeowners Association, Board of Directors, to enforce those restrictions that we're discussing today. It is not in the purview of the developer to change them arbitrarily in the middle of the process of continuing the development. Because we have, in the greens, in the first five filings, there are six sets of restrictions. They don't differ greatly, but they do differ. That's why we want to see the restrictions on the, all the filings from now on before we can comment and be responsible for their enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Lynn Myers. Lou Myers.
Yes, sir. The reason I came tonight was because I found it very, first of all, I'd like to talk about the process somewhat. And second of all, I'd like to talk about the, some of the things that were brought up last time. You know, if you go look at the process, I found out today as a homeowner that this meeting was going to take place, and they had items on the agenda. At that time, you know, I picked up the phone, if you look on people's voicemail around here, you'll find several phone calls. Tried to call the Homeowners Association, and I tried to call the office up here, and I called the office up here three times and trying to get a copy of the agenda for tonight. Says on the webpage it'll be posted the Friday before. It clearly was not, okay? And then I can't, when I called up here, the only thing I got was, you know, have a great day in Ascension Parish, and transferred from phone to phone to phone until they finally got me on voicemail, and that happened three times. And then I attempted to call the President's office, wasn't able to get through there either. So it was like a secret society to find out what was on the agenda tonight. The only way you could get it is to come to the meeting, because it wasn't posted, and it wasn't really available either the Homeowners Association or the parish, because I tried to get it. So that's process number one. That goes back to what I think the Homeowners Association brought up. Secondly, is if you go look the last time, there were several issues brought up by the Homeowners Association about building in Pelican Point. One of the issues that I remember, because I was at the meeting, was the emergency preparedness. Not only the drainage, but it was fire protection, emergency preparedness, and then some other administrative issues like meeting the codes and all that. So if you go look right now at emergency preparedness, you know, one of the issues they had was, and since then, I've tried to call the state of Louisiana to find out what the requirements are. But back when the subdivision was properly registered, I guess, the emergency preparedness codes have changed drastically over the years, because that was, that's my experience. I go looking, and right now, one Aston on Pelican Point on Highway 44, there's only one access out of there, and that's onto 44. And that was brought up at the last Homeowners Association meeting. Before I moved other people in here as a board, I would make sure that the emergency preparedness is proper in this area. Sir?
Thirty seconds.
Yeah, I would just ask you all to make sure prior to approving any other homes being built in that area, that it has proper emergency preparedness, because all you want is in the newspaper where some truck turned over, we can't get out of the dagum subdivision, you know? And that was brought up at the last Homeowners Association meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No one else?
Again, I think I've answered a lot of those questions in the last public comment period. If the Commission has some specific questions, I'd be more than happy to address them. As far as the emergency ingress, egress into the development, as you know, it's a master plan community. It was granted preliminary approval long before my time with Pelican Point. That is what we're building off of. You know, I don't want to speak to grandfathering in. I don't know what the process is or what this Commission's wishes are, but that is what we're doing. We're building off of our approved preliminary plat, nothing more, nothing less.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr., I'm going to make the same motion to approve.
Wait, hold on, let me, hang on before you, I just want a clarification. On this final inspection, is it different? I mean, I'm trying to read the regulations here. When, you say in your notes that they have not even requested the final inspection. Does that final inspection have to take place before we approve it? Just give me some clarification, because it's...
It's alternate Procedure B. Are you looking at that?
I'm looking at Procedure B.
Okay.
The answer to your question is no. If they file a bond, we do not, it is not required for a final inspection to be held prior to the plat being signed, because the bond is your protection.
Right, and that's what I'm, because it's got on paragraph F, Acceptance of Improvements and Maintenance Bonds, C2, you know, 2401C, you go to 2401C, it talks about having an inspection, so maybe that's just referring to the bond and not the inspection.
That's the maintenance bond.
That's the main performance.
So it doesn't refer to the rest of those lines.
The bond is what protects, to make sure the construction's complete, the file inspection's held and all that, and then you go into the maintenance bond.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
I have a question.
Isn't that another entrance right there?
Yes, ma'am.
So are there two entrances?
Yes, ma'am, there are two entrances.
Is, there's a note here about, is this whenever locked?
It is a private entrance. It is gated, and I could, the Association controls the time that the gate shuts. It's open during the day, both sides, ingress and egress, and it closes at night, at what time, I'm unaware.
Okay. When I drove, I think I saw the construction entrance.
Okay.
Is that being used at this time? Do you know? Because it didn't look like it was being used.
No, the construction entrance was a construction entrance for the development of the second golf course, as requested by this Commission at that time. It was never a construction entrance for the development. It was a construction entrance for the second golf course, and that is all it has ever been. And I think we've, this question has come up numerous, numerous times over the years and with the same answer, and that's what it was for.
And it's pretty much not being used now?
It serves no purpose. It ties into a developed section of the greens. There's no development going on in that area that we have access to that point right now. So no, no, ma'am, it's not serving a purpose right now.
Okay, thank you.
It possibly could serve a purpose for future development of, but as of right now, no, it's not serving a purpose.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
I'm going to make the same motion that we approved, because the plat is consistent with the ordinance, with the provision so that the declarations be recorded prior to the chairman's signature and that a copy made public. And just for the residents, I'd like to make the comment that the substance of the document is just not under our purview. We could require that they be recorded, but we can't impose or intervene in the language that's in them. That's a private civil matter between you guys and the developer.
Okay, so I have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to approve by Julio Dumas was second by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item eight, public hearing to consider the following servitude revocations. Eight A, Gerald Goto tract, lot C-1A.
Good evening, Chris Becker, representing Value Homes on this servitude encroachment of two feet of the 12-foot utility servitude. I believe we've provided everything that is necessary with all letters from all utilities saying that the two feet is not objectable.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Is Gerald Goto a private road?
No, ma'am, it's a parish maintained road now because it is blacktopped. It was a private road, but it's blacktopped now.
Okay. Do, is this house being built by a private individual, or?
No, it's built by Value Homes, by Chris Becker LLC.
Okay. I looked at it, and I'm wondering, if these people have, if someone buys the home, if they have a third car, where are they going to put that car?
Well...
Because there is no room, there's room under the carport for two cars, and that's it.
Mm-hmm. They could have only one car, actually, you know, they could extend the carport further back behind the home if necessary, you know? And when whoever purchases the home, if they want that at that time, will add it to it. If not, you know, there's nothing behind the home that would stop them from adding to that back carport, that it would continue on, or adding to the side of it.
I did not count the houses past this house, going down Gerald Goto Road. Do you know offhand how many houses there are?
I believe there are three that I have built, and I believe there are two existing homes beyond that.
Okay, so there's about five houses that are going to be using that road.
Yes, ma'am.
And that road is 10 feet off of this house.
No, ma'am. We're only, we're talking about two foot of the utility servitude.
Right, but what I'm looking at, and I don't know, this may, maybe this is not an issue, but I looked at it, and I could just see a child running out into that street and being hit by a car from someone going down past this house. And I don't know, I don't know, again, it's a safety issue. I don't know if there's anything that, you know, that, I don't know if we can do anything about it, but I just think it's a safety issue. I could see a child getting hit on that street.
Staff, I had a procedural question. Doesn't the code require 12-foot utility servitude?
What was the question about?
The code requires a 12-foot utility servitude, all right? So if we're going to deviate from the standards of the code, doesn't that have to go to the Board of Adjustment?
No. The 12-foot utility servitude is required by the subdivision.
In actuality, I improved the property, and on the left-hand side of actual C3, if you see that on the plat, I buried the utilities. Instead of having overhead utilities, I improved it, spent the additional cost on it. There is no utilities going through this 12-foot whatsoever, and this is according to a road schedule versus the actual road itself. And there's much room, and I believe we've already talked to the parish about this road being widened farther to the outside part of that home, and I did not object, and we sent them letters on that, so that road can be widened farther to the right-hand side, which I did not object to.
It's just still very, very close, and as I said, I can just see a child running out of this house and being hit by a car. I don't, and again, I don't know if it's an issue, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but it's very, very close. The only thing I know you could do about it is tear the house down and scoot it over, so that's why I say, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it.
Yes, ma'am. If you actually go down Black Bayou and you look a little farther down, there are houses just as close as this one, two private roads that are right off of Black Bayou, so, I mean, children in the same type of danger there also.
I didn't notice that.
I did. I went and looked at it because they're grandfathered in.
But we're only talking about this house tonight.
Yes, sir. I'm just making it in comparison to what other houses are there also.
I agree, but we've been directed to stay focused on this task in the past, so...
What's this zoning here?
This zoning? I believe it's, it may be residential. I'm not quite sure. I'd rather not answer and say... Charles, do you know what it's on?
I'm not sure. I think it's all around.
RM?
I think so.
Have you gotten a variance for this zoning, for the setback?
Well, we have to go through this procedure first, sir. This is what we've been requested to do, which was...
So you have to come here for the revocation first, first, sir?
Yes, sir. And then we go through that step next.
Mr. Rue, do you have room to do maintenance on this road?
What about the public road?
Yes, it is a public, it's a parish road.
Yeah.
We are obligated to do the maintenance on it. We have talked about the possibility of that triangle, which is, if you're looking at the map, on the right side, to be actually dedicated to the parish, so the next time the road does need to be upgraded, that the parish could come in there and actually move part of the road over a little bit to that side to give a little bit more distance between the road itself and the house. The requirement would be to give that triangle as a dedication to the parish, to do that where, when it's needed. That is a possibility that we put out there.
Was that already planned?
No. No.
Or is that due to this house?
It's, it's actually due to, due to the house. And they asked, you know, for our opinion on it, and that's the only thing that we could recommend. You know, if he's willing to do that, the parish could actually improve the road a little bit by moving it over when it's needed, when it's time to renovate the road. And he had no objection to, I think, to dedicate, you know, part of that property, not all of the property, to the parish.
That's correct.
But it's not something that we can do prior to him moving, that somebody moving in. It's just when the road is ready to be repaired.
Okay, is that something the, they would, they would pay for? They're going to pay for the road improvements?
No. And again, you see, what I'm saying is, when it's time, when the road is, is at the point where we need to go and mill it, you know, where take the asphalt off, reconstruct the road, at that point in time, it would not be that much more cost to, when we have it at that state, to actually move the ditch over several feet and realign the road slightly at that point. It would not be a big expense because we're tearing the road up anyway. And if there's no utilities, which I don't see any utilities on that right side where we have to move, it would be a fairly simple process to move it over slightly. And that was our opinion.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess I have a question too. This is, I just, a question for you. What happened? Did you guys just miscalculate the two feet?
No sir, actually what it was is that there was a error committed by the plat that I actually had, and it said that it was, it wasn't clear if the actual setback was 15 feet from the center line of the road or 15 feet from the edge of the road. We assumed it was 15 feet from the edge of the existing road, which we did do. The house is 15 feet from the actual edge of the existing road, not from the road schedule. So we, we thought we had the right amount of room and then obviously it was wrong according to what the plat said. So we're dealing with it now, and we didn't realize that until it was brought up. I mean, the slab was approved, the construction is three-quarters of the way through, and we've been stopped now for six months on this home. This is not something that, obviously you can see I have 25 feet on the left-hand side of that, that property. I would have easily moved it over, you know, to clear that. I mean, this is not something that I normally do, and I've been, built many homes in the parish of Ascension. This is the first time I've run across this. We're just trying to rectify this mistake as a misleading interpretation of the plat when it was written down by the engineers that actually did it, and I just went according to what was on it. It's read one way, it can be interpreted two different ways. Yes sir.
So I, I just want to make sure I understand. You said you've built a number of homes in the parish?
Yes sir.
And this is the first time you've come across?
Encroachment on the utility servitude, yes sir.
Well, but you are, you are aware of servitudes and building lines and so forth?
Yes sir.
And you didn't understand this, and rather than pick up a telephone and contact someone in the parish or get some clarification?
No, sir, that's not the case, no. No, no sir.
I'm just going by what you said, and you said that you didn't understand.
No, it's not that I didn't understand, it's that the parish interpreted the map in one way, the engineer has it written down and it's not clear. And the plans and so forth were submitted to the parish and approved, and the actual setting of the home. This was all approved ahead of time. This slab was inspected before the concrete was poured. I mean, we had many inspections on this home. So it was, it was obviously an oversight on, on many parts at this point, not only my own, but just trying to rectify the situation now. The house is three-quarters of the way built.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? And we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item? Come up and sign in with the secretary and he'll get your three minutes. No one wishing to speak. Last time, comments, questions from commissioners?
I'd like to take a stab at getting this thing moved on. I think in light of the fact that what you're asking is for revocation over, over complexity of issues and what have you, I'll revoke it with the proviso that you, you grant the parish the necessary real estate on the east side of Gerald Gotoe Road to adequately realign this road and the utility servitude so that it could be restored at such time as the parish steps in to maintain.
Of course.
The road. And that, that's the end of my motion. So I would encourage you to have that done before you get to the board of adjustment.
Yes.
I have a motion, a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Julio Dumas to approve the second by Paige Becknell. Any opposition or discussion?
Opposition.
I oppose.
I have, I have two nays, Scott Courtwright and Sherry Slimon. Motion passes. Item 8B, Bruce Hunt Property, Track W.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Norman, I'm with Evans Graves Engineers. We're requesting the revocation of Track W and the access servitude, which was dedicated in 1978 with the initial plat of Autumn View Subdivision. The tract is not used for public purpose, and all utility companies have responded with letters of no objection. Additionally, the Department of Public Works has responded with no objection, provided that we dedicate a 15-foot drainage servitude along the western property, I'm sorry, no, yes, western property and northern property line adjoining Lot 39A of Autumn View Subdivision, which we are agreeable to.
Comments, questions from commissioners? We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up and sign in with the secretary and he'll get you three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
What happened to Track W?
What happened to Track W? I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, it was created as a tract and served to the passage to it.
Yes sir.
It's in common ownership now with the rest of the land?
In our due diligence, we saw that it was dedicated in, on the plat of Autumn View Subdivision, and there have been, there were some subsequent re-subdivisions of this unnumbered tract, and the tract disappeared. And it was never used for public purpose, and we're just going back and being thorough. It was never used for public purpose, nor was the servitude of access.
Is the unnumbered tract already subdivided?
No sir.
So all of the unnumbered tract, including Track W and that servitude of passage, it's all under one common ownership?
Yes sir.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish, the commission?
I'll move for approval subject to the dedication of the drainage servitude as requested by the DPW, with the condition that those dedications be delivered to DPW prior to the recordation of the, of the revocation.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, committee reports. Subdivision ordinance committee did not meet last month, and we were supposed to have a special meeting. Special meeting got canceled and we had a workshop on, on PUDs, which was interesting and informative for the commissioners that couldn't attend. But we will be holding our regular subcommittee meeting next Wednesday at DPW at 5:00.
Could I request at your meeting, you look at this final inspection and how it correlates with accepting these plats, these final plats? Because I, we run into so many problems not having a final inspection before approving the plats. And I just think it would be a good move if we made a new rule where the final inspection has been held before we get the final plats.
On our policy?
Yes.
We can look at that, we can come up with something.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment? If you look at, if you're doing procedure B, you're not going to be able to do that.
I was going to say the same thing.
Why can't we change it?
Well, you could, if you want to get into the bonding issue, you can change that. But, but if you're going to make a statement that the final inspection must be held, then you pretty much have to get rid of that provision in the ordinance to bond.
You need a mini ordinance, you can't make a policy on that.
That's right.
That's good.
There's, there's two, two issues to that. One, you've got to deal with the bonding issue. Number two, you know, typically the final inspections are held right about the same time as the commission is, is hearing it. The reason that it's not required is it just, if the final, if it rains and the final inspection can't happen till tomorrow, let's say, then that developer's going to be subject to waiting another 30 days to have his plat approved.
Yeah, but I mean, we've had them come in where some are like that. I mean, it's, it's very close and others are, I mean, the road's not even there.
Right. You could make a policy that the ERA needs to determine that the project is substantially complete, which means, you know, there, we go out there and the asphalt's down and it's graded out, but just the final inspection hasn't been held. I think that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, okay.
That's why I made the comment about the, how much, what percent of the project was completed.
Under procedure A, that would apply, but under procedure B, all you've got to do is submit the construction plans and post the bond.
I know.
And that's what, that's what the ordinance allows.
Well, and, and the purpose of that is to allow a developer to, to provide financial surety to the parish, assuring that, that the project's going to be completed. He doesn't get that bond released until it's finally approved and accepted.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but I just, there's just always a, a problem with, whether it be us or homeowners in the area, it just, there's always a lot of questions. And I just think we need to get a little more definition.
It doesn't need to be discussed tonight if you're going to talk about it, but, but as, as O'Neil said, it's a two-part discussion, just make sure we hit on both, both subjects.
Okay.
Okay, item 9B, strategic planning committee report.
I was unable to attend strategic planning.
And me too. They didn't, they send the notice out the morning of, so I didn't, they had.
I know. I find it kind of interesting.
They had one at 5:00 and I missed it.
You get a notice the day of the meeting and so.
Well, I, the, I think the original meeting was canceled the day it was supposed to be.
Right, because of the same.
Like the second notice was the, that morning of the following week.
Okay, it was at 5:00 and I got there at 6:00, and then the next one was at 6:00, but the notice went out the morning of, so like saying. They talked about drainage.
You know, our legal counsel was at that meeting, maybe he should give the report.
Aw.
They talked about drainage.
Yeah, they talked.
Stick with it, O'Neil.
They recommended the, some changes to the drain Jordans and they're going to submit it to the parish council.
Good report.
Thank you.
Item 10, new business.
Paige and I had lunch with Michael Sanji one day last week, and we talked about education. And we would like to have some education on drainage, traffic, law, and we thought this would be a good place to bring it up.
Or a workshop?
That's a good idea.
That'd be great.
Well, we, we, that, that idea has been discussed before. In fact, it was sent to the zoning subcommittee to, to work out the details.
And we did. We suggested that we do it once a quarter, and that was rejected.
In the meeting?
Yeah.
Let me go on record, there was, this was not a formal deal, from what I remember. It was discussed, but there was nothing ever formally put on the agenda about it. I'll go on the record saying I fully support workshops at least once a quarter. But as far as being formally on an agenda for a subcommittee, it hasn't been formally on an agenda.
Let's go, well, we, we should see about.
What I'm trying to say is there were some informal discussions on it, but there was no formal agenda item, so therefore when people were opposed to doing it, there was no reason to ever bring it to the full commission because it was never on a subcommittee agenda. That's what, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Okay. Can you put it formally on your agenda?
Absolutely.
Would you, can you put it on the next subcommittee agenda? If you would?
So that's the zoning subcommittee?
Zoning subcommittee.
And that's the appropriate place for it?
It could be either. Either subcommittee could work on it.
Okay. I don't want it to fall through the cracks. I want to make sure it works. That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm pushing.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other items of new business?
Let me ask this question to Sherry. I like the idea of education and workshops, but sometimes it seems like we're not connected to the council and that sort of thing. Just a general question for the group. Do you get that, you guys think it would be beneficial to have a invite, not just us, and have education amongst ourselves, but get other people on the board, on board with the PUD thing and have workshops that would be inclusive, or education that would be inclusive of council members and commission and so forth and so on? I mean, I don't want something big and drawn out, I don't want something too big and formal, but I think sometimes people get in their own little corner and they get their own mind made up on what they want to do, and that can happen in a council setting or in a commission. But sometimes, I know we don't talk a lot between council unless you go out and find that person, or unless they find you, it's one-on-one. So my suggestion is more of a round table that would be inclusive of the council and, and this planning and the zoning commission, sitting down saying, hey, let's talk about PUD development in Ascension Parish, let's talk about drainage in Ascension Parish, kind of thing. That's my more than two cents.
I like that idea because I think what happens a lot of times is we don't sometimes understand the process ourselves.
Correct.
And the public comes in, they don't understand the process, and we want to try to explain it to them.
Correct.
So they understand as well.
And the other thing is that each one of us brings our own experience and professional background, our own ideas. We're all serving on this commission, the council too, for one purpose, and that is to the betterment of this parish. But we don't get together and talk about those things, and what that mean, what that ideal means. Maybe that's a little too holistic, but I would like that joint venture.
Well, maybe we can get them scheduled and we can let them know when they are, and if they want to come, they can come.
That'd be good. I mean, for example, if we're going to have a workshop that talks about the three big topics, drainage, traffic, and schools, well, maybe we should invite the school board to come sit down, and not this formal setting, but sit down a discussion, let's talk about the future plans of schools and how we're addressing that and, you know, so forth and so on, as opposed to doing it in front of the public, let's do it amongst ourselves and talk about, get on the same page and figure out what we're doing and move forward.
Except that we're not allowed to vote on schooling at all. We have no say-so, which I think is. We have no say-so, which I think sometimes even the public doesn't understand. As a commission, we have no say-so in the whole schooling districts and what goes in a school district and how the schools are affected and what the school board has to say, and they don't show up to these meetings.
I agree with that. I've been down that road. But I do think that we still need to work at dialogue amongst ourselves, educating ourselves, educating the count, where we're coming at from the council's perspective, where we're coming at from the school board's perspective, you know, and tackle some of these issues.
Well, the zoning subcommittee can look at all this stuff and...
So you're saying the zoning subcommittee would be the one that would set up an agenda and set up a time to meet and those kinds of things? Set out the structure for having an informal meeting?
Yeah.
Well, we'd bring a recommendation and then the commission would set it. We'd just bring your recommendation.
Yeah, the subcommittee would come up with that and bring it to the full commission and the commission would vote on whether to do it or not.
Maybe go ahead and work out a, like I said, this item came up before and was discussed some as far as the topics of discussion. Whether or not we needed to have our engineer present and legal counsel present, and all those details were, I mean, there was discussion on all those different details. We're just going ahead and working out some of the other logistics. Yeah. Okay, item 11, old business.
New business.
No, you still have another item.
Simple division.
I thought we had that.
Simple division. At minimum, I think that, you know, moving forward, it'd be nice if this thing only had the simple division. We kept it nice and clean. But I think we need to take a look at the simple division and see, you know, what additional information needs to be included in the packet versus, I mean, if we absolutely have to ratify it, maybe just a copy of it could be included.
What if... I'm just throwing this out because Charles and I discussed this some time back. As far as a, I don't know, more of a description. I mean, right now, you've got, on here, you've got some of the, you know, a brief description as far as the details and the number of lots.
Well, I guess, you know...
As far as what, you know, what is taking place here.
Well, you've got, the top three have no lots, zero lots.
Because there may have been a minor, a minor change. If you look at, if you look at the last two on the last page, Johnson's Ridge and Quail Hollow. Well, Johnson's Ridge was just, yeah. Quail Hollow, or Johnson's Ridge is now known as Quail Hollow. But those changes on the plat required the chairman's signature. So, I mean, it's, there's a number of things that are taking place with this.
Right. Yeah, and I'm trying to think of what here that's on these three sheets, actually constitutes something that we approved beforehand. I mean, you said that you include them, but everything I see here is, it's just simple, right? There's no, there's no anything else. You've got a name, you know, you've got a name change, a revised flood. I tell you what, what if, how about if I added to the zoning subcommittee?
Subdivision ordinance committee will be happy to take the issue up and bring something back to the full commission.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Are there any other items of new business? All right, let's move along to our old business. Item 11A, Clarence C. Clifton Jr. property, lot D, or lot 7-D-1, 7-D-2, and 7-D-3.
Ellen Jackson with McLennan Associates proposing this division into two additional lots. There was one comment that's just a matter of moving the labeling of the servitude, and that was addressed. Asking for your approval.
Any comments or questions from commissioners at this time?
I have a note here that a turnaround was supposed to have been constructed. Am I on the right?
I don't know anything about turnaround.
Under number three, under staff comment, that has never been...
Oh, they didn't send that. Is that number three?
Just man the last sentence.
Okay, it will be constructed. I mean, the road is not deteriorated, it's in the process of being built.
It's in the process of being built right now?
Yeah, the servitude, I mean, we just staked it out and everything for them to build it, but the turnaround will be constructed whenever the road is put in.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I've got a question. Ms. Jackson, I've got four plats here. Which one's the latest?
Which one?
It looks like here it started out as a big subdivision. And then, I've got this one with six little lots in the front.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I've got six little lots in the front and four equally divided. And then, I've got six in the front and...
You keep saying the six in the front, but those are existing, that's not a part of this.
Okay, which, what I'm asking is which of these plats is the latest? Is it this one?
Yes.
Okay. Why, why do we have so many changes? Why, somebody, somebody, I don't know, it looks like somebody couldn't make up their mind.
Plat number one, whenever it was done in Alderman Woods, I have nothing to do with that. I don't know what happened with that. But when you made the six lots along the front and then the one in the back, I mean, that's, I mean, you could just do that because it had road frontage.
Okay.
I guess they wanted to just go ahead and cut those lots out if they were going to develop this in the back. Then they changed their minds. It was a corporation, so they wanted to divide it equally, so they just did the four big lots. There's nothing stipulated that they couldn't sell those lots. So when this individual came in and he wanted his two cousins to live on it, I mean, this is all that we could do because that's the way it exists.
Okay. You, were you involved with the last two?
Yes, I was.
Okay, see, okay. And, okay, this is the third one. Was it approved?
Yeah, it's approved.
Okay, and then they didn't, they didn't go, well, this, and then they decided to do another one?
Well, the four lots, it existed, but then they sold this 7D. So, that's how you end up with that.
Okay, on this one, they sold 7D?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and that's what we're looking at dividing today?
That's it, and it's by somebody else, it's owned by a different individual and not the same people, so. It's not like the same people are just coming back.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wondered. I didn't know that. Okay.
And you're proposing to take the lots to the, to the center line of the road?
Yes.
Why?
Because that's the way that track exists. 7B exists, it went to the center line of the road, so I'm keeping it in the center line of the road.
Okay, but you're coming in for a subdivision, and what's the difference? I mean, why not create, you know, a lot 71, 2, and 3, fronting on a dedicated road right of way?
That is a dedicated right of way, but that lot exists the way that it is. It runs to the center line of the road.
Well, no, that, I guess, who's going to maintain Alderman Wood?
It's private. I mean, that's a private street.
So you're, you're going to be requiring a variance. This is a simple division of property and you're requiring a variance?
Lots fronting a private street, yes.
Front, on a private street.
Mm-huh. What are you asking? Why am I going to the center line of that?
Well, I just see, I just see a number of issues. I mean, you have four lots that could ultimately become 12 lots, all fronting on a private street, that I can see bill rule inheriting. And, you know, in the near future. And I think it starts here. I think you start dedicating the road right of way to the parish, piece at a time, and we don't, we don't maintain it until it's all dedicated to the parish.
They're not dedicating it at all to the parish. This is private.
It's a private road, and not dedicating it to the parish. That's what they...
Yeah, but ultimately, what's going to happen when the road's deteriorated and needs to be fixed? I can see the future bill rule at DPW having to fix it.
I don't think he'd be required to fix a private road.
Yeah, he doesn't have to take it in. I mean, it's not dedicated, it's a public road.
Ellen, you said that McLennan Associates was involved with the last two plats, the current plat that's being presented and the one before that.
She asked me that, yes.
Excuse me?
She asked me was I involved with the last two, yes.
But you were, McLennan Associates was involved with this one as well, creating seven lots.
She didn't, she didn't ask me was we involved in the last three. She just asked me was I involved with the last two. She could clearly see that McLennan's label is on that map, so...
I can clearly see it too.
Well, okay, it's there for you.
The question that I've got is, I have some information from the Corps of Engineers website pertaining to this piece of property. And what was submitted to the Corps in February of 2006 is, is interesting because it's showing exactly what's taking place right now. Ultimately, creating no less than 18 lots on this piece of property. This piece of property, the reason that you have the original proposed subdivision of Alderman Woods is because that came before the commission and, or was going to come before the commission, I should say. It never did because drainage issues couldn't be resolved. So when that happened in January of 2006, this property comes before me to be signed, the simple division of property, creating the seven lots, six along the front and the seventh, the rest of the property. It came before the commission later on, dividing up the seventh lot into four. And now we're seeing, or we're starting to see each of the four lots being divided even further. So we have a resub of a resub of a resub, and it's all different owners. This is some of the stuff that we've been talking about in the past with circumventing subdivision regulations. Now, what you're going to end up with is a subdivision where there's no drainage impact study done. You will have individual sewer treatment plants. And then you also run the risk, because I can say at least 18 lots, what's to prevent someone from going and buying more than one lot, creating a private servitude of passage and doing a family partition and further subdividing it? I just thought it was interesting that this, you know, this is what's proposed to the Corps of Engineers to get a permit for something, and it's taken a long way around to come to us.
Well, I'm not aware of what was sent to the Corps because I didn't send anything.
And you should know, you're going to end up seeing other pieces of property just like this. The same thing is going to be done.
Are all the four lots that are, constitute the former lot seven? Are they currently in common ownership?
I'm not aware of that. I don't know. I just, I'm working for Ricky Dupree, the one that bought this spot. I'm not aware of if they, um, are currently in ownership right now.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? I don't believe this item is up for public hearing. It's just a public meeting on it, Charles?
That's true.
The commission has no other questions or comments. What's the wish of the commission?
Mike, do we have public comment period? I have two people signed in.
A public comment period for this stuff is usually the first public comment period, but... If they didn't understand that, then I guess we could, I mean, we could make an exception and allow it to give them the opportunity to speak on this item.
What's the reason that we don't have a public comment period on it?
You have a public hearing, you have a public hearing, or a public comment period on that item at that time. At the beginning of the meeting, we have a public comment period.
No, I'm not, this, right now, the one...
For the simple division?
This was deferred from last meeting, so you should open it.
Yeah, we should open it. It was a deferred item. Is that not right?
Yeah, correct. It was deferred.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on it. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up.
Elizabeth Ballard. Good evening. I have some handouts. Do I have permission to approach and hand them out to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Does it count against our time? Is it clock running? Do it quicker, quick, quick!
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Ballard. My husband Shelby Ballard and I live at 39427 Germany Road, adjoining a twenty-one acre tract of land that was referred to as the Clarence Clifton property. The simple division request before you tonight is for a portion of that property, seven D. I ask that you deny this request. A determination needs to be made by this committee as to whether the end result of these multiple simple divisions will in fact result in the development of a subdivision. I've given you copies of a public notice from the Army Corps of Engineers dated February 24th, 2006, concerning that Clifton property for your review. That public notice clearly outlines plans for a subdivision referred to as Alderman Woods subdivision. I request adherence to the parish ordinances governing a subdivision for this property and that the privilege of simple division not be used to circumvent those ordinances. Attached to the public notice is a letter I wrote to you dated August 17th, 2006, stating my concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Shelby Ballard.
Good evening. Appreciate your time. Uh, the handout that my wife gave clearly indicates that the purpose of, or the intent of this whole thing is to develop a subdivision. Mr. Marshon expressed his concerns regarding the fact that by doing simple divisions, we somehow circumvent the process that the commission has over governing subdivisions. Across the front of this piece of property, the lot number six that isn't existing now, they've already begun building the pad for this. At this point, it has already started to have a drainage impact on my property. If this is done and the council or the parish has no recourse to go back once this is done, then what it's going to do is create a drainage impact on our property. And there would be no recourse whatsoever for anyone to step back on. We're asking that the denial of this simple divisions based off of these reasonings and observations. I would also like it to be known that my wife and I do not oppose a subdivision being constructed there. As a matter of fact, we had welcomed this regarding the subdivision that was posed to the council that was later withdrawn. So we went in as record stating that we were in support of a subdivision. But we're just have concerns that these simple divisions will be able to get around the parish ordinance governing subdivisions. And therefore would leave us with no recourse or any action whatsoever when it would come to drainage issues or any other issues regarding environmental impact or traffic impacts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. No one else?
As far as the twelve lot division, I have no idea. Was that maybe the owners were planning on doing twelve lots and just changed their mind? But I didn't submit a plat with twelve lots.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
You know, to me, I think that the application that's before other review agencies clearly establishes that this property continues and remains into some form of a common control. I personally think that, you know, we need to clarify a number of other issues, and I would prefer to see the whole parcel, if it's under some common control, to come in as a, as a complete subdivision rather than piecemeal it. I don't think using a simple subdivision process here is nothing short of an affront to avoid the entire subdivision process. It's my personal opinion.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I guess my question for you is, have you not seen the public notice from February of 2006?
The public notice from February of 2006?
That we have in front of us?
The Corps.
From the Corps of Engineers.
No, because I would, you know, I wouldn't have a reason to see this because a wetland determination is not one of the criterias for submitting a simple division.
How does this, I'm looking at the definition of a simple subdivision. I'm not quite sure this applies when looking at the definition because it talks about fronting on an existing publicly dedicated street, and this obviously does not.
They're requesting a variance with this.
Sorry.
You would have to grant a variance to that.
Thank you.
Comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I make a motion to deny this particular variance request that's placed before us. Reason being, uh, it's not a simple division. It is intent. I've seen evidence that it's intended to be a subdivision development, and that's not the intent of a simple division.
I'll second it.
I have a motion to deny by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition? Motion passes. Okay, item B, E Thomas E tract, lot two and two B.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, again, with a simple division with a waiver. This is to create one additional lot. There weren't any comments. Asking for your approval.
Comments, questions from commissioners?
This one was deferred from last month also, right?
We'll go ahead and open, open up a public hearing on this one as well. Comments or questions from commissioners at this time? We'll go ahead and open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this property, please come up and sign in with the secretary. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I, I thought variance, I thought a simple division was with a family member. Am I, am I wrong there? Family partition. Simple division can be whatever, okay.
I don't understand the variance, Charles. What's, what's...
Excuse me, it's hard frontage on a public street.
So this will have no frontage on a public street?
That's right. In a simple division, it's supposed to front on a public street. So that's the request that they made.
Just out of curiosity, why is she going to give it to the fiancee and not the son?
That's some kind of legal matter. The house is going to be in her name, so the bank wanted the lot to be in her name. They're not married, so that's all I know.
Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I would make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I vote nay.
I have one, one nay by Julio Dumas. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I have item C, Dan Pickering property, tracks four dash G dash one and four dash G dash two.
Ellen Jackson, again, with the servitude revocation. It was labeled as a drainage servitude, so therefore we only needed one letter from DPW, and we have that, and we're asking for your approval.
Comments, questions from commissioners?
Ms. Jackson, they just decided they didn't, it just wasn't required anymore, the drainage is better?
Well, whenever this was surveyed, at one time, they asked for a hundred and fifty feet so that it could be maintained, but it was just supposed to be like a, you know, just temporary. But whenever it was surveyed and subdivided by another engineer, they labeled it as being a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot drainage servitude and not being that temporary servitude. So it's not required. The parish wanted me to purchase like seventy-five feet of that.
Okay, so it's more of a correction then?
Yes.
Okay.
And this item was also deferred from last month. So if there is anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up and sign in with the secretary, and he'll get you three minutes. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from the commission?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve by Julio Dumas.
I second it.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item D, Wesley Place.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, commission, this is chairman. May it please the commission. I'm Kevin Howell, legal representative for Wesley Place, developer of Rodney Sheets. We would like to beg the commission's indulgence. My original letter was asking for reconsideration of the request for approval from last month's meeting. We'd like to inform the commission that we are withdrawing that request for reconsideration at this time. After our meeting with DPW and getting input, as well as careful review of last month's meeting minutes, CD ROM, reviewing the information from the August meeting, we are going to come back to this commission at a future date with a new submission after, hopefully, lots of input from DPW in an effort to resolve the issues that we have advised Mr. Sheets. We observed, after review of the public's comments, concerns that we now understand DPW has, as well as the engineering, I'm sorry, the parish's engineer, and taking into consideration the comments that many of you all had. So at this point in time, we are not asking the commission to reconsider the original plot, but at an appropriate time, most likely not any earlier than December and maybe even later, depending on what the engineering is. But we are going to relook at those issues that have been raised and brought to Mr. Sheets' attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item E, Stonegate Manor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Kerry Arstino with America Homeland. Last month, we came to you and requested and received approval for the development of Stonegate Manor. Along with that request for approval, there was a waiver attached to it. In a meeting with the homeowners association, they, no one chose to speak at the public hearing because they had no objection to the subdivision. We were asked for clarity on that in writing, which I did not have, and I apologize for that. But tonight, at the request of the homeowners of Whispering Oaks, they have asked that I come back and ask for reconsideration of that waiver. And in clarity of that meeting, I do have Councilman Jared Burger with me tonight. I realize that the public hearing has been closed, but I would request that if y'all had any questions on the clarity of the meeting and what the people were requesting, that you could ask him any questions you have about that meeting. And with that being said, we are just requesting reconsideration of that waiver for the people of Whispering Oaks subdivision.
Any comments or questions from the commission?
I will, I made the motion, and I will say that I still think it's a safety issue that we should require the connection.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from Councilman Burger to see if he met with the residents of Whispering Oaks and what they, what they had to say.
I don't see why we, we can't hear from Burger.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the commission. Are we out?
Good.
Outstanding.
We're good.
I was just curious if you had met with the residents of Whispering Oaks and what their issue is with, with the connection to the subdivision?
Yes, sir. I was invited by the developer and also the residents of Whispering Oaks to attend the meeting when the developer proposed this, this particular subdivision. It was kind of unusual meeting. The only concern they had was connectivity. They didn't complain about drainage, they didn't complain about traffic, they didn't complain about anything but connectivity. Really no specific reasons, just did not want it. Expressed it pretty adamantly. And I didn't show up the first time, and I got, got in trouble. So I showed up the second time, and they, that's just the only thing they're concerned about.
I understand the concern over safety and everything, but I, I have a more practical issue, and that is that during the course of the construction, that'll end up as a construction entrance, and it's, and it'll end up as that simply because it's convenient, and that's going to put an enormous amount of burden on the people of Whispering Oaks. And that's why I voted no when the subdivision came up because I, I hated to see it approved with that, with that imposition on the adjoining property owners, what we hadn't heard from them. That's the only reason why I voted no, because I wanted to, I was in support of the waiver. For that reason.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
My only concern is, is if for some reason, reason, the entrance to Whispering Oaks were blocked in an emergency, how would they get out of their own subdivision?
I can't answer that because Whispering Oaks and Lazy Oaks are side-by-side subdivisions that are already connected.
Whispering Oaks is connected, there's a, there's a throughway through Lazy Oaks?
Yes. And the homeowners are requesting that we not connect another subdivision into theirs. That was their original request.
So the next question is if there was something that happened at, at this proposed subdivision, Stonegate Manor, then how would those folks get out? Therein lies the problem.
Right, they're not looking that direction.
Correct. And that's, that's where we're put in a jam.
Well, from a practical perspective, the reality of it is, is that we're dealing here with a, with a relatively wide standard subdivision road that's got curbs that you can roll over. And you're not dealing with a situation where you would have a semi-truck with hazardous material that would turn over and block a street for a long period of time. You know, we're dealing with the kind of events that would be relatively minor in nature that would necessarily, the likelihood of you having incident in a situation like this that would block a road for a prolonged period of time is, is just not, this isn't a throughway where we have heavy traffic. throughway where you have heavy traffic.
Well, what if they decide to put down new asphalt on, what is it, 621?
931.
931, thank you. I mean, I'm dealing with that right now on Old Perkins. Every time I turn around, I'm being redirected, and I can't get home because the subdivision doesn't have a throughway. It's a safety issue. If there's an emergency and an ambulance needs to get through, it's a safety issue.
Fact of the matter is that if you're repaving 931, you know, both the state and the parish would have an obligation to preserve traffic. I have that problem where I live, and they've resurfaced all of those roads, and I've had to drive through those situations, and it's never preempted me from being able to get home. If you have an alternative route, the government has a right to make you go a circuitous route. But if that's the only way, I live on a dead end, on a dead end highway. So I really only have one way in and out, and they've resurfaced both of those roads, and I've had no issue with it. It's been permitted. You know, I mean, I have a hard time supporting forcing this thing. I'm very frank with you.
Well, I agree that we need to look at this stuff on a case-by-case basis, because you're going to have circumstances, they're going to differ, they're going to vary for each development that comes before us.
That's correct.
I also remember, Burger, you remember this too, because it was just last year when we were arguing over traffic in the parish. One of the big issues was connectivity. Several of the council brought up the issue about this commission approving one street subdivisions. That was an issue. So we find ourselves with a double-edged sword. And we're going to have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And the ordinances do cover some of these points. As far as topography or sound engineering. And it's left up to the commission to decide as far as the other circumstances involved.
So... I'm going to make the motion. I move that we... Sorry, I want to make sure I get it correct. We not change the waiver. Is that correct?
I think it's deny the reconsideration.
Thank you. We deny the reconsideration.
I have a motion by Sherri Slimon to deny the reconsideration.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
I have a substitute motion by Julio Dumas to, I'm assuming, to accept the waiver, or to accept the request to approve the waiver.
I would move that we reconsider and approve the waiver on the grounds that it's consistent with the intent of subdivision, it does not impose undue hardship on the residents of the proposed subdivision, and it would, enforcing the connectivity would have an adverse effect on the adjoining residents of Whispering Oaks subdivision.
Did you get a law degree, Lester? I don't have a second for either motion.
I want to second the initial motion by Sherri.
Can I have a, I have a second on the original motion by Steve Barrow. And the substitute motion is going to die due to the lack of a second.
I was waiting for the vote on the first one, then I...
I thought you had to have a, well, actually, you have to, the substitute motion would be voted on first had it gotten a second.
Okay.
So it's died to lack of a second. Now, we get to vote on the original motion.
You say so.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the request by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I oppose.
I oppose.
I have two opposing, Julio Dumas and I can't remember the name of the guy. Alan Kraus. Motion passes. I'm going to look at you on TV.
Absolutely.
Okay, and item F, Victoria L. Wilson Estate, lots one through seven.
Good evening. Okay. My name is Kathy Wilson Thompson. On August 9, 2000, the Ascension Parish Planning Commission approved the family partition for the estate of Victoria L. Wilson. Seven lots were created so that each of the heirs could receive their share of the estate. Since that date, three of their heirs have died. Because of the grief and confusion caused by these deaths, two of the remaining members of this state became gravely ill and had to be hospitalized. With all of these events happening in our family, no thought was given to the family partition approved August 9, 2000. The attorney for this state transferred the lots into the appropriate names of the family members and had this document recorded on March 21, 2006. The remaining heirs of Victoria L. Wilson would appreciate if the planning commission would reapprove the family partition so that we can have closure on this matter. Sincerely, Kathy Thompson.
Any comments or questions?
Why does it have to be reapproved?
Because it went past the 90-day mark.
However, that being recorded?
Just by a bit.
It was recorded by the attorney as part of the succession. It's really a housekeeping matter, because even if the clerk of court cannot tell you he's not going to record the document if you have a succession from a partition. Whether the commissioner signs it or not, I can tell you that. Now whether you can do any action with it after that is another matter.
I don't think we need to have a public hearing. We can, if there's anyone else, we can open it up for public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up at this time and sign in with the secretary. One of the things I want to make sure, Charles, you and I had a brief discussion about this as far as bringing this plat up to date with the current ordinances. Has that, that has been done?
It will be done.
It will be done. And O'Neal, you and I also had a discussion pertaining to the newly amended family partition ordinance. This family partition would still fall under that, the new ordinance.
Correct.
Correct. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Before you do that, I have a question on the farthest lot from Highway 73. There's a comment there that says title conflict. Any clue what that means or what's going on there? Just so the plat is correct on the, when there is a submittal to the courthouse?
The only thing I could think of, and the only person that could shed some light would be my father, but he's not here. There was a concern with the heir of Rebecca Nelson and the heirs of Joseph Wilson. As far as anything else, I'm not really sure.
It seems...
I might be able to shed some light on that.
Okay.
If there's a conflict on title, the attorney who was doing the succession wanted to make that noted on the record so that somebody along the way would have to resolve that question.
So it's not an issue for you?
No.
Okay.
It's really an issue for whoever's going to buy that property or use that property at a later date, or if the bank wants to buy it, just want to let them know that there's a conflict in that title.
I just wanted to make sure it was, it just caught my eye, so...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one comment, since this was done in 2000, there was no note on it about any new drainage ditch. Can we add that to it?
I don't see where that would be a problem, to bring it up to, bring it up to current.
That's right. I'd like to add that to the plat.
If I understand it right, the plat's going to have to be brought up to today's standards, prior to the chairman's signature. So it would include that.
Sounds like a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion for approval based upon bringing it up to today's standards, including the drainage that Mr. Rue mentioned there.
I have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow.
I second.
Seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Second.
Item 12. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Julio Dumas, seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any opposition or discussion?
Uh-oh.
Motion passes.
Didn't get away that fast. Yeah, you just got to be slicker than that.